I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2025 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Priscerna.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Ledouti.
Here.
Mr. Scadari.
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi.
Here.
And Mr. Puglisi.
Here.
And Sabina Sciris.
Here.
Sorry.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any communications, Kathy?
No, Chairman.
No communications. Okay, let's go to Resolution Application 25-004. Mr. Regal?
Yes, this is the resolution for the substation, Kenilworth Corporate Property Urban Renewal LLC. The Board approved this in a meeting on April 24. Board's familiar with the project in the resolution. I outlined the size of the project. I needed preliminary and final site plan approval. There were three minor dimensional variances. The Board approved the application unanimously. I understand that there were some minor modifications suggested by the applicant's attorney, which I've not seen.
He sent me the updated information. There were minor changes.
Like typos?
Typos.
Okay.
Is the Board okay with the typos, modifications? I think we're okay, right? Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Clemente. Roll call.
Mr. Priscerna.
Yes.
Mr. David.
Yes.
Mr. Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Ledouti.
Yes.
Mr. Scadari.
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi.
Yes.
And Mr. Puglisi.
Yes.
Okay. Application 25-003 Site Plan Corweave. Mr. Hale, how you doing today?
Good.
Kathy. Thank you very much. Stephen Hale representing the applicant Corweave. Obviously, this Board has gone through several of the cases back to the resolution that you adopted tonight, dealing with the old Merck or his kids sharing plow site, throwing up the five points. So, we're excited to be here this evening. We also like to thank your Board professionals and the Board itself. We've had several TRCs on the application. Kevin and Christian have provided great insight into our projects and done detailed reviews. We've received those reviews. We have no problem or concerns with respect to them. In essence, as the Board is well aware, you've had two of the Onyx applications. We are here this evening for an application for site plan approval, essentially to take one of the old layup buildings and convert it to a data center. As part of that, there's also going to be field of generators and a field of chillers related to the data center. This Board, in conjunction with your counsel, did adopt a redevelopment plan. This project is consistent not only with the uses and the redevelopment plan for all the bulk standards. There's two minor variances, and I think you touched on them probably with the last application. One of the buildings has, there's some minor setback associated with that. So, that's really an overview of the application, very minimal site improvements, and generally the site from the roadway, you won't really see any changes at this point. So, that's an initial overview of the application. What you proposed this evening to witnesses, Michael Terlizzi from Corweave is going to first tell us a little bit about what Corweave is and what they're looking to do with the site, and then Damiola, who I know has testified twice already in connection with the Onyx applications. So, if there's no preliminary questions, I'd like to call.
Yes. I just want to ask Kathy, are we okay with notice and publication?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we get underway, Mr. Hale, I think I'd like to swear on our professionals.
Yes.
This way we can get that out of the way.
John, with regard to this application, do you swear that any testimony or comment you're about to give shall be the truth?
I think I do.
It's our planner and our Board engineer.
Great, thank you. And I wanted to thank both of you again for your help. All right. All right, so.
If you could raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Michael Terlizzi. T-E-R-L-I-Z-Z-Y.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Terlizzi, I know you've been involved in this project for quite some time, so why don't we begin with a little bit about what is Corweave, the presence in New Jersey? I know your headquarters is right in Livingston, and then we can move on to why this location and for Kenilworth is a great fit.
Yes, absolutely. First and foremost, on behalf of Corweave, I want to thank the Board for hearing about our proposed project, and certainly want to thank the members of our design team and other Corweave people that are here today and support. My, Terlizzi, I'm the Senior Vice President of Data Center Operations at Corweave. We are a specialized cloud computing company where our infrastructure, both hardware and software, is specifically designed to support artificial intelligence applications. While we build, design, construct, operate data centers, our product is actually selling that compute capacity, right? We are what's called a GPU as a service company. In essence, if and when we get to complete this project, we will deliver one of the United States' most state-of-the-art and largest supercomputers. Corweave has been around in its current capacity for nearly three years, founded in New Jersey. When we think about why Kenilworth, a big driver for us, is that it's in New Jersey. We currently have three data centers in New Jersey. We have 33 data centers overall, roughly 450 megawatts total globally. So, we're in North America, we're in Norway, Sweden, Spain, and in London, and we have 1.6 gigawatts of contracted capacity globally. So, my team is responsible for site selection, design, build, and operation of our data centers. We then will install the network storage and compute in those data centers and then hand it over to the really smart people at Corweave to provision all the services and make it operate for artificial intelligence. From a site selection standpoint, I'm up here roughly 14 months, and I think it was week two that I got to see the campus, the Nest campus, and it was right up our alley. We have properties where we've done an adaptive reuse, where we took buildings that may have been purpose-built for other applications and been able to deliver high-performance compute environments within those buildings. This is one of them, right? When you look at the building from the size of it, the footprint, the structure of the building, up to 300 pounds per square foot, the ceiling heights, it's attractive, it lends itself for a data center operation. There is great fiber in the area. Weight and see is part of the performance of our supercomputers, or ability to access networks is critical to the performance of that supercomputer, and that fiber gives us access to major interconnection points that exist in Secaucus, they exist in Weehawken, they exist Jersey City's, and of course, New York City. Dealing with the operator, the landlord, Onyx, they had a vision for the site, to make it the premier technology center in the Northeast, and we wanted to be part of that. And they had master planned, they've done a lot of work on zoning for this, where we share their vision for that site, so that was very attractive from that perspective.
Well, why don't we then touch on specifically what's going to happen? I know Dan will be here to take us through the site plan. To this building, it's an old, former, converted to a data center. Tell us a little bit about what's going to happen to that building, and then we can get into your operational.
Yeah, absolutely. So, that Merck campus had a substation that was onsite, was meticulously maintained, so we're looking to leverage that capacity in part to deliver our infrastructure. The modifications to the building are minimal. On the exterior, we're replacing the roof, we'll replace all the glazing, so all the windows around the building, and that really just improves efficiency and the water tightness of the building. There are some minor alterations that we'd be making to the entrance, more of an aesthetic, and then there'll be some signage, which I think Dan will review later in the session. As mentioned, there is a generator yard, so our facilities need to operate 24 by 7, 365. That is for emergency generation only, so as long as utilities live, we won't be running any of those generators, they're standby generators. And then to the south of the building, that yard is roughly 125,000 square feet, and then we have a 50,000 square foot chiller yard, which is part of our mechanical system that helps cool the servers that are in the building.
And if you could take us through just briefly hours of operation and number of employees?
So, we're 24 by 7 operation. There will be roughly 40 employees in total, and we operate in shifts. So, at a peak, we may be in the 15 to 20 employees, and then our overnight shift may be five or six people. And the type of employees we'll have are security people, we will have individuals that are responsible for whatever called the mission-critical infrastructure, so the electrical mechanical infrastructure, and then we'll have our data center technicians, and those are the hands-on people that are actually working on the servers.
And you touched briefly on the generators, they're not running 24/7. Frequency of testing, and I know that we discussed in our prep, that there are sound systems in place?
Yes, of course. So, we engage third-party acoustical engineers to make sure that we can beat or exceed the acoustical requirements of the area. So, those generators are, as I mentioned, emergency generators only. We would test them on monthly basis for a 20 to 30-minute run, which we do during normal business hours, so it's not to disturb any of the neighbors or any of the other tenants of the Nest property. And again, they would only run in an emergency situation where both legs of our utility were down.
And if you could touch on, you mentioned it, just briefly, that onsite would be security people, what about security?
Right, so that generator, the generators, I should mention, are all in the acoustical requirements. But, so the generator yard, as well as the chiller yard, will all be secured by effect. We will have, there will be access gates that will require a swipe in order to get into those access gates, surveillance all around the perimeter of the building, including the yards, 24 by 7 surveillance at the property, and we also have a security operations center that we have in our headquarters that has visibility to all of our locations over there.
Great. And Christian and I, we talked about it also, the trash, minimal trash generation, but briefly, how is that handled?
Yeah, so we'll contract with an independent carrier to come in and handle the trash. After our initial install, it's relatively steady state. The traffic that would come in from an equipment standpoint are whenever we would need maintenance to the mission-critical infrastructure, or when we've reached critical mass on servers that need to go out for repair. So, we'll always have onsite servers both installed that we can port traffic over to, and then we'll also have warm standbys that are in our storage area that we can swap out. If we have X amount of server failures, we call the server manufacturer to come in, they take out the ones that need to be repaired, and they bring us new ones. So, again, that would occur maybe on a weekly basis, and then we expect probably box trucks, one delivery for different maintenance items that occur on a daily basis.
So, as compared to warehouse and the like, very minimal truck or other type of traffic?
Yes.
Great. Chairman, Board members, Board professionals, I have no further questions of Mr. Terlizzi at this time.
Thank you. Any of the Board members have any questions at this time? Would you like to hold for later, or we could do that later? I do have one or two questions real quick. Mr. Terlizzi, I know you're coming in, and you're doing a lot of fabulous things on the property. Do you have a vision or foresight to expand on that property in the year 2, 3, 4, or 5, or do you think this will do it for you?
No, no. So, one of the things that attracted to us was the ability to expand. And any opportunity that we go to, we hope to land and expand. For this one, candidly, we're anxious to get this first 40 megawatts up and running. For us, this is in our backyard, right? So, the voting market for Corweave has been first, initially when we started getting into the GPU as a service business, is to contract with larger data center operators and secure data center space from them, and then we go ahead and install our equipment. Now, we're into a mode where we are in the code-develop, because we're building at scale, and that type of capacity just doesn't exist. So, we work with other developers to create data centers. This one is our own self-perform, design, build, and operate. It is how we're going to communicate to the rest of the globe, this is what good looks like. If you want to see what Corweave data center looks like, and the reason why we're number one is because we deliver the best and we deliver fastest. We're not afraid to put cutting-edge technology out there at scale. We're going to say, if you want to see how it's done, come to Corweave.
Thank you for that. The other question was, you really talked a lot about surveillance and security. Surveillance, would that be surveillance cameras, people, security? Would that be armed security or a security team, a car? How intense is that security?
It would not be armed security, it would be people. People that would be at our security station within the building, and we also have roaming security around the perimeter and inside the building on foot, and then of course, the surveillance, they will have access to all of the cameras at those security stations, but we can basically access those cameras from anywhere in the world.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone else? No? Thank you, Mr. Hale.
One question. I've seen a number of generators. They all have to run at the same time as backup, or you have like 10, and some of those would be backup?
It's really, so how the generators run and at what capacity to run is highly dependent on what the load is inside of the building.
So, it's possible you don't need to run all of them? You can put them online as you need them?
Exactly. And then some of those are therefore done, right? In case other generators fail, we have some extras out there for the non-security backup capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hale.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Terlizzi.
Thank you. I'd like to now call upon Damiola.
Well, we could open up questions, back and forth, anytime, something may spark. Okay, Mr. Regal, I'm sorry.
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Daniel Miola, M-I-O-L-A.
Mr. Miola, you were in front of the Board not long ago, you qualified as engineer. Any change to your licenses or status?
No, sir.
You're good to go?
Yes.
It's okay with the Board?
Yep, it's fine. Thank you. All right, again, Mr. Miola, I know you've been here twice in recent memory for the two of the Onyx applications. You've heard my opening, you're welcome here with the project, I've heard the testimony of Mr. Terlizzi.
Dan, you can use the list?
Yeah.
Let me move out of the way for you.
So, if you could take the Board through an overview of the existing conditions, and then what's, I think, proposed by way of improvements, and then you can also address the reports from both the Board Planner and Engineer.
Great, thank you. So, I'm going to use my first exhibit, which I'm going to mark as Exhibit A1, which is titled "Aerial Exhibit." I also have it projected up there on the board for those folks in the audience. Exhibit A1 really depicts an aerial view of the campus. As I had indicated in prior testimony here, the campus is 107 acres. It was recently subdivided to create two lots, one of the lots is 71 acres and the other is 36 acres. This development is proposed on this 36-acre portion of the campus, which includes much of the front yard area along Allen Hill Road, as well as the building K11 and the area immediately around it. The tract as a whole has a redevelopment plan that governs zoning, which requires much of the bulk combined statistics to be reported tract-wide. So, building setbacks, impervious coverage, parking, requirements such as that are to be looked at based on that redevelopment plan on the whole tract. So, that is what governs the zoning and the reported statistics for this project here. So, this project is located direct, you know, within building K11, which is towards the middle of the campus, as well as the parts immediately surrounding K11. I'm going to now flip to my next exhibit, which shows the extent of a rendered view of the site plan that we're presenting tonight. I'm going to call this Exhibit A2.
Yes.
And I'm going to flip to that exhibit on the board as well. This kind of zooms in on that area immediately in the center of the site for building Nest 11, as well as immediately surrounding it to show what we're proposing. If you recall from the aerial exhibit, Nest 11 had a fairly large parking area immediately to the east of it, and within that area is where most of these improvements are proposed, as well as to the south of the building. So, as you heard by our attorney and our other witness, we're proposing to convert this Nest 11 laboratory building into a data center. Just to report a few of the statistics with this building that exists, it's a three-story building with a basement. The floor plate itself is about 70,000 square feet. The overall square footage across the four, or across the three stories in the basement is 247,000 square feet, give or take. Depicted on this exhibit includes the proposed substation, which has already been approved. We were before this Board about a month ago for that, as well as the improvements in the existing parking area to remain. So, that which is on the right side and this bottom right side for the existing parking areas, that is not part of this application, but I depicted it in the exhibit, just so everyone has context as to the, really, the final conditions out there. The part we're here presenting for this application tonight includes the conversion of this building to a data center, as well as the yard area to the east of it, which will be a generator yard, and the yard area to the south of it, which will be a chiller yard. So, first, I'll speak to the generator yard. As you heard from our applicant witness, Mr. Terlizzi, redundant power is very important to them for mission-critical buildings such as this, and so, in addition to that, the electrical connections that they have to the grid, they require generators in case of that grid outage. So, for this project, we have 31 generators located to the east of this building in the electrical yard. In addition, we have some other electrical equipment within the yard, which includes switch gears, transformers, above-ground conduit, and some other associated electrical appliances. Most of this equipment will be located on concrete pads. Those pads will be surrounded by gravel. As depicted on this exhibit, this generator yard also includes an asphalt driveway for access for emergency services, as well as maintenance vehicles. Also included are three existing loading docks. Those exist there today. They'll continue to be used for the periodic loading that this building will need. Within this area will also be refuse collection. The applicant has agreed to hire or contract a private waste hauler for all refuse collection generated within the building. So, that's the electrical yard to the immediate east of the building. To the south of the building, we are proposing a chiller yard for the mechanical chiller equipment, which is critical to keep the building's air conditioning system, which is necessary given all the computer equipment within the building. We are proposing 29 chiller units with four water tanks. The chiller units themselves will be on an elevated steel platform. The water tanks will be located on a concrete pad surrounded by gravel. And also around this chiller yard, we have a driveway for emergency services, as well as maintenance. I have discussed this site plan with the Borough's Fire Official, incorporated some of his comments into this design. In addition, I did just receive another comment from the Borough's other fire official regarding the width of the driveway around the chiller yard, and I can agree to comply with that comment after this hearing, if we were to be approved. Aside from the two main equipment yards, which I described, we are proposing some signage. I'll flip to my next exhibit. In order to provide some testimony on the signage, two signs are proposed. As depicted on this exhibit, which I'm going to label Exhibit A3, the main entrance into the building is actually the west side of the building, and so, on that western building face, that's depicted by this top building elevation, there will be a sign that's 10 foot 1 inch tall by 15 feet 3 inches wide, which is about 150 square feet. That will be proposed closer to the grade, and it will really identify the building for the personnel walking in and out of the building. The second sign we're proposing on the opposite elevation, the eastern elevation, the side of faces, our generator yard, that building, that sign is going to go higher up on the building corner, really closer to the top of the building. That sign will be 2 feet 7 inches high by 22 feet 10 inches wide, and these signs are both fully compliant with the sign requirements on the site, with respect to sign area, sign projection, and sign height. I will flip back, there's a few other components of the site itself that I will provide some testimony for. As mentioned by Mr. Terlizzi, the site will have a sophisticated security system, and the yards, the equipment yards, both the chiller yard and the generator yard, will be surrounded by an 8-foot-high security fence. That fence will include two gates towards the north part of the site, which will be utilized for main access into the yard. Those gates will be operated with a card reader and intercom system that'll be looped in to the security system for the building. In addition to those two primary gates, the chiller yard and generator yard also each have a gate on the opposite side, the south side of their yards. Those are provided for fire access after we've coordinated with the Borough's Fire Marshal. After security, regarding a few statements regarding the parking, due to the employee counts, the building needs about 25 parking spaces. The applicant has a lease agreement with Onyx Aseitar that includes access to 25 parking spaces within the campus. We believe- We believe the spaces that would likely be utilized are immediately to the west of the Nest 11 building, given its proximity to the building's front door. But really, these 25 spaces could come from anywhere in the campus based on the way the lease reads. As I testified before, all the parking requirements, as well as many of the other bulk requirements of the campus, are to be on a track-wide basis. So the conversion of this use within this building does provide a new parking requirement on the campus of 2,877 spaces. After this development, as well as the space of room for the proposed substation, we are looking at a final count of 2,988. So a surplus of about 100 spaces will continue to exist after this development, so we have enough parking based on the requirements that we've developed in the plan. Few more statements from a stormwater management perspective. The generator yard is proposed over an existing parking lot, and therefore, that aspect, that part of the site is reducing the amount of stormwater runoff, reducing the amount of impervious coverage, as well as paved surface, which will be a benefit to the stormwater quantity and quality coming off of that part of the site. To the south of the building, that's proposed over an existing landscape area. And so there are impervious coverage increases, as well as paved surface increases proposed for that portion of the drainage area. And so we are proposing to mitigate for those increases through the use of an underground infiltration system that'll be under the chiller pad. As I, I'm not sure I actually stated this, but these, the chiller equipment will be elevated on a steel platform. And so beneath the steel platform is going to be natural grade, and beneath that natural grade is going to be the stormwater infiltration system that I referred to. And so that area, combined with what we have as a portion of this driveway, will be pervious pavement. Those two stormwater management best practices are going to be utilized for the south area in order to mitigate for our impervious increases. Lastly, really from a landscaping perspective, the projects will be towards the middle of the property, and it's separated by our residents, our residential neighbors to the east with this existing parking area, as well as the proposed substation. And as you might recall from the substation hearing, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about the evergreen plantings that we are proposing to the east of the perimeter road, right against the existing buffer on that eastern part of the tract. Those trees was tallying to 123 new evergreens. It will enhance that existing buffer, which is already, already has a fair amount of vegetation within it, and that will be screened not only for the proposed substation, but also for the application that we're here for tonight, the data center. Finally, as our attorney, Mr. Hale, had said, I am in receipt of the comments from the board planner and the board engineer, and I will agree to address all those comments after this hearing as part of our suspicion compliance if we were to be approved tonight. Have no issue with any of those comments.
Dan, just one minor thing that I pointed out. We do comply, as you've indicated, with the redevelopment plan. It's in place of two pre-existing various conditions. Just describe them. One, I believe, is a minimum side yard setback 10 feet. We have nine and a half, and rear yard setback 15 feet, 9.4 feet. I know it's not related, not related to any of these improvements, or at least this part of the site.
Sure. I'll go back to Exhibit 81, which shows you the overall tract. As I mentioned, those requirements apply to the tract, the outer part of the tract, and there are 10-foot side and rear yard requirements, setback requirements for any building against that outer 170-inch tract perimeter. And you can see along the parkway side of the building, there is a structure that's indicated on this exhibit with a white roof. That was one of the, I believe, the side yard encroachment into the 10 feet that's required. And then along South 31st Street, there are buildings there as well that encroach on that 10-foot setback requirement.
And they're existing conditions unrelated to this portion of the, of the site?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. I figured councilor, you want to be able to incorporate into...
Can I get a, are you finished, Ms. Neal?
Yeah, I have no further questions of Ms. Neal.
Does anybody have any questions?
There are no improvements to the facade of the building, is that correct?
They are proposing the signs that I had walked through earlier.
Other than the signs, obviously.
There's going to be power washing, you know, and improvements such as that, maintenance-related improvements.
But nothing like structural is changing, or...
No, I believe some glazing improvements as well, but yes, no, no major changes to the building elevations.
Permits have already been issued for the roof replacements.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
Simple question from the fire chief also. So we do provide our, we provide our turning radius for the new lab we're getting, which is our largest piece. We're looking at some of the turning radiuses look like, which is fine for a new truck, but that's going to be like state-of-the-art, very new turning radius. I'm a little concerned when we have other utility companies coming in, if there should be a large fire, that they're not going to be able to get there if it's a little older or doesn't have the turning radius at all. I'd like to see if you can maybe do those same turning radiuses and stretch the wheelbase out a little bit, just so, you know, take a cramp and cramp any turn, downgrade that a little bit, just so we can see how that can affect it.
Sure.
And if we need to make some adjustments, if we do make adjustments at that point?
Yes, understand. We can be worried, yeah, to depict those turns.
You good? Mr. Grumal.
I don't know if this is for you or for, for we ourselves. Are there any inherent hazmat issues with all the generators and their dressings now? They're typically sealed units, but one of them go bad? How do they handle theirs? Do they have hazmat planned?
The generators are, we don't fuel generators, so they all include a valley tank for the storage of that fuel. There are fueling stations that'll be utilized, meaning that they need to be filled up. The fueling station itself requires secondary containment underneath in case of a spill, so that will be incorporated into the development plan. In addition, there are what's known as a DDP pre-construction permit needed for the generators, given the, given the number of them, their sizes, and that's a state requirement, and we are going to obtain that permit in connection with the development.
So you'll have all your Jersey people, you can get it. Okay. And the owner spoke about sound levels. Do we have just a general understanding of what the sound level will be when the generators are doing their maintenance?
Well, yeah, the generators are going to be, I guess, off for most of the time when they are exercised.
Yes.
They will, like, like any development, they'll have to adhere to the borough's sound requirements and the lot lines, which I believe there's a decibel level during the day, as well as one at night, that will need to be complied with. Not only does the borough have that, but the state has that as well. And so that, that will, that will be a requirement that we'll have to...
He mentioned that there were sound continuation systems on them, but do we know what that decibel level is?
The state standard decibel level, I believe it's 60 decibels in the day, 50 in the night. Looking at our attorney, Mr. Hale.
Yeah, I got all right, but...
55, 65, 50, 65, somewhere around that.
Somewhere around that.
We'll make sure we get it.
You good, Mr. Grumal? Anyone else on board?
No.
I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Neal. Just let's stay with the decibel levels for a minute. So you're going to do whatever the state requires. You'll be, you'll either meet that or be under that for the generators.
Yes.
As part of your testimony tonight. The other thing, I'd like to backtrack. Earlier, you said in the pre-existing 9-foot-5-yard setback, where 10 feet are required, correct?
Yes.
Then on the second one, you said 9-foot-4 pre-existing with a 10-foot setback. That should be 15, right?
15, yes.
Correct?
You're correct.
So just for clarification, that's, that's where the relief is needed in that area.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Two other questions. We, I heard you talk about the water tanks and/or water towers. I don't know which one was which. And if so, you were also talking about elevated chillers. How, what is the height of those?
The height of the platform is about 10 feet, and the height of the chiller itself is another, is another 15 feet.
So you're 25 feet in the air?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be for the chiller or for the water tanks?
That would be for the chillers. I'm actually not sure on the height of the tanks, but I can, I can consult another one of our project team members and get back to you.
Okay. Last but not least is the infiltration system underneath the water tanks. That infiltration system is basically for what use? Is it for rainwater, the water tanks, or...
Rainwater only, sir.
Rainwater only.
Just rainwater and surface runoff due to the rainwater that's coming off these driveway areas, as well as that which is landing, you know, within the, within the yards.
And the infiltration system is going to deposit water where? Just within the system until it goes into the earth?
Down, groundwater.
Go into the groundwater?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else?
No.
Mr. Kevin?
Thank you, Chair. Chief, Mike, Mr. Neal has agreed to expand that worldwide. Are you content with Christian looking at it, or you guys want to look at it?
No, we're, we're going to be looking at it. Our only thing was, the state code requires 26 feet from the hydrant on 20 feet of each side of the hydrant. As long as we have that, we're fine, so we definitely take Christian for it.
And you're okay with the width of the apparatus going through?
Uh, just like to see the...
Like a hook and ladder from you?
Yeah, so I'd like to see the turning radiuses with a larger truck or less, the less of the turning radius, to make sure we can get in. And again, if, if he expands and it's all good, then I'll...
Mr. Neal, if anyone wants to take that into consideration in the next step?
Understood. You should have my email, do something. Yes. Do that.
Thank you, Chair.
Christian?
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned the signage on the building. Is there going to be any signage along Gouton Hill Roads directing into the site for we?
None proposed.
Comment 3 on my, under Utility Plan or on page 4 of my letter. If you can address 3 and 4.
Can we turn that light up a little? That's in Utility Plan? And then it was left.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Number 3 is with respect to existing sanitary utilities that go through this area. Due to this being an existing laboratory, they use process water as part of their laboratory experiments or operations. That water is required to go to a, to a holding tank as, as part of their discharge permit that they have with RVSA. So the holding tank on the site is actually just to the, to the north of the building. There it settles for 24 hours, and after that, it discharges all the way across the campus to the south onto 31st Street into the sewer system there. So they have this sophisticated industrial discharge permit just for this campus with RVSA. And given that the holding tank for this water is immediately north of the building, there are sanitary lines for the entire campus that comes, that come through this area, and we are working with the owner to trace those lines, and so we understand where they are, and then relocate them, so we know there will be no conflict with any proposed utilities as part of this project. The other one...
Can I just jump in on that for a second before you go to the next one? So that's a holding tank. In, in that holding tank, is there a media there that needs to be cleaned and processed?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure on the answer. I know there is a discharge condition that needs to be held for 24 hours. I believe that's for, for settling. Not sure if there's a filtration system within the tank itself.
Were you going that way?
Kind of, yeah. No, so it wasn't clear on the front where everything was going, because it was just kind of a snapshot of the area. So it just shows like a few connections about where it goes from that part of the site.
So, Mr. Neal, it's not like a frac tank, then? It's a, it's a holding tank?
It is a, it is a holding tank, I believe, for, for solid settlement. But again, it's a, it's all based on the conditions of that industrial discharge or permit they have. Not sure on what's really within the tank.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. You want to go to the next? And number 4?
Number 4 under utilities?
Yes.
All right. Number 4 asked to clarify if domestic water is also proposed. Domestic water exists to this building, and we are not proposing to change the line size as a result of the project.
And that line can handle filling those water tanks, if needed?
Yes, I believe for the tank. The water tanks are closed systems, so it certainly exists. I guess after it's initially filled, it will just circulate.
Okay. That's our thing. Good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Grumal?
Vivid back on your question. If that holding system wasn't here, would your facility need that type of industrial holding system?
No. That is really only required through the process, wasn't what was there, and then will...
Okay. Good follow-up. Thank you. Next, anyone else? Gentlemen? No? Okay, Mr. Hale?
Yep, we have no further witnesses at this time. Certainly, Mike and Dan are here to answer any further questions.
Okay. Kevin or Chris, do you have anything further before we talk a little bit more about this?
Thank you, Chair. Board members, this application is for a site plan approval, and it consists of the area of the data center and the surrounding improvements that are being proposed this evening, generator area and chiller area. What you've heard in testimony this evening concerns those improvements that are being proposed. The two variances that are listed are pre-existing. They're not going anywhere. They date back to the old, and somehow, hey, what discretion. Anyway, they're there. We're not doing anything bad. Doesn't concern Mr. Hale, or we, or any of that in any way. So your discussion this evening revolves around public health, safety, and welfare, whether or not this meets the general borough requirements for site plan approval, and of course, whether it meets the urban municipalities law, which also calls out community health and safety and welfare. In essence, this is good for the borough, will have any negative impact. Are there any questions? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Chris?
Nothing then. They agreed to address everything that was, that was in my report to, to revise their plans, and the only other thing that I forgot to put in was, if this is approved, a pre-construction meeting with the town, obviously, to kind of go over scheduling and... a pre-construction meeting with the town, obviously, to kind of go over scheduling, and we'd like to have someone from the, from the town there during certain aspects of the project.
Okay. I think at this point, we'll open the meeting to the public. Make a motion to open the application hearing to the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Ledotti. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application and this application only? Okay.
Make a motion to close the application hearing to the public.
Application hearing is closed to the public by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Scuderi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Board members, you heard our professionals, you heard the applicant. We here now talking amongst ourselves, and any concerns, anything we, we need to discuss before we go forward? Nothing? We're all good? Okay. Is there a motion to approve this application from everything that we heard? Mr. Miola, I think I'm pronouncing that right. Mr. Miola has stated that he would comply with everything from Shamrock and Harbor. He also stated that he would comply with the, the fire chief and their concerns with either turning radiuses, radiuses and making things wider. I, I think, again, they presented everything that we needed to hear. Is there a motion? Yes. Motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Scuderi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reserna?
Yes.
Mr. Scurice?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Ledotti?
Yes.
Mr. Scuderi?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
And Mr. Fogliesi?
Good luck.
Congratulations. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate the board and board professionals, board staff, and look forward to this most exciting project moving forward.
Yep. Mr. Hale, may I convey back to you that this board is always impressed when you have a team of professionals that you bring to us like tonight, that makes our job that much easier. So thank you and everyone that's here tonight.
Right. Have a great night. Thank you.
Awesome, the Catworth. Welcome to Catworth.
Okay. What's that? You'll have it all done real quick? Okay. Comments for the good of the board? Mr. O'Brien has a. Oh, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. My God, I had my dark glasses on. I see his, I see his response. He told me I was number one. Told you to read between the lines, Tanner.
Chairman, I note that our next meeting is the 27th of May.
Correct.
Approximately 12 days from now, and should the board wish to consider a resolution on this matter, then at that meeting, I'd just forewarn our applicant and our attorney that that's got to be done, and it's got to be shipped out a couple of days out, so we all have access.
So you told them that already?
Didn't realize they're walking up.
Let me just grab that.
Hey, Steve?
Mr. Hale? Okay, good.
Steve, we're just pointing out, Mr. Hale, excuse me, we're still on the record, pointing out that our next meeting is the 27th of May.
Yes.
Four days from now. And should the applicant wish the board to consider a resolution on that date, we presume that you and our attorney will work very closely together.
Correct.
To get that out to this board a couple of days prior to the 27th.
No problem with that. We've worked extensively in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
That's a regular meeting, seven o'clock.
Yeah, we're meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, Mr. Hale. Have a good night. Nobody? There's a workshop then? Okay, any comments? Are we done? Yes.
I'm waiting for the board.
Any comments for the good of the board? You, sir?
I was quiet the whole hearing.
I know. That's why I could get dinner at 7:15 if you. Oh, no.
I have a long dissertation on.
Who was that masked man?
Okay, we've done really, really well moving things along. There's another open application, North Holden's on North 12th Street. Christian and I, the chairman who's been in the TRC, we're working with these guys to do this. We're still in session, everybody.
Excuse me, gentlemen, if you could be so kind, we're still in, in session.
We're trying to get approvals, approvals, I plan, for the finish line. It has proven harder than we thought. They scheduled for the 27th of May, which meant that all their stuff had to be in Monday was scheduled. So that's not happening.
Oh, it's not in?
No. No, they haven't even run it by us. Yeah. And I know you're shocked at that based on their last performance, Rich actually walked out on it.
I had to walk out of the meeting.
So, we were wondering, between now and 27th, or if you can give me any indication tonight, are any of you available for a special meeting on Tuesday? There's a restriction on Tuesdays now, June 10th or June 17th? So at least I can see if they can be ready for that.
Tuesday, June 10th or the 17th, a special meeting for that other application?
For the North Holden warehouse, the old Zeus?
Yep.
On North 12th.
On the 10th, not the 17th. So, let me tell you, June meeting, why would we do this?
Because that's the end of the month.
But here's. What's the rush on this particular application?
It's been hanging for a while.
Understood, but that, it's their fault. It's not, the days don't run out on, on anything that we did.
No.
No. No.
So Mr. David's point is, is valid, right? Right. So what we also want to say is that if we don't have, if we don't have any applications on the 27th, I think it is, except the resolution? Am I correct?
No, we have the bus company.
Oh, okay, okay. Never mind where I was going.
So we've got that, we've got the fence application, and then the resolution for the 27th. And then the next thing out will be North Holden, North 12th Warehouse.
Kevin?
Yes?
Our normal June meeting would be the 24th.
Our normal June meeting would be the 24th.
Correct.
So if you all want to kick it to the 24th, so be it. If you want to think about a special, you're the board, you start.
Again, I, I think you got my opinion.
I got your opinion. Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. I'm not going to speak for the board, we could have a show of hands, but in our experience so far with this particular application and what I experienced at the TRC meeting, I don't think I'm going to put that much more time into a special, because it seems to be a waste of time every time we do that. So I think what we need to do is keep it scheduled on that next meeting on June 24th. Does everyone agree or anyone disagree? Agreed, so.
We agree.
I, I, look.
If the board wishes, we can continue it on May 27th to the June 24th meeting.
Correct.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Yes? This is, comments for the good of the board? Yes, this is a nice shirt, thank you.
So when we hear these applications, if there's any outstanding violations with the construction department, they can file their applications.
Correct.
So with the North Holden's property, there's repeated fire violations, and the Fire Prevention Bureau is separate from the building department, and they're having trouble, I know, serving them and getting them run around and everything else. So I don't know if there's a way that we can include fire prevention with, when they're checking for, make sure there's no outstanding violations on these buildings?
Absolutely. I, I mean, I thought that was part of the application to begin with.
No, because these, these guys have, definitely have some outstanding fire violations.
On the North 12th?
Yes, and they may, they're more recent maybe, but, you know, their P.O. box gets sent back, you know.
So Mike, not putting you on the spot, how come this is the first time this board is hearing about this?
Well, this is the first time we've had, really had an issue, and I'm made aware of fire prevention separate from me. I'm not, for fire prevention as.
Is that Carmine?
That's Carmine.
I wish he was here.
He was here.
I know, I wish he was still here.
Want to see if you can bring him back?
We can't talk about specifics without hearing our case, right? We just got to talk about the general police.
This is, I think this is a general conversation on whether or not we should implement.
Very general. If there are open violations, they need to be addressed before they proceed. They were aware that there were prior violations. We were sure that they had been addressed, and if they have not been, we will also let you know when our next interesting meeting with that is. So if you kind of give them anything, you may want to tag along.
And I'm going to have Carmine maybe talk to Wanda and get, he's now getting plans and everything, which is great, because he wasn't getting plans. Now everything's greater than that, so I just don't know if, I don't think that it really reached that communication, because it's never been done in advance.
Right.
About violations, so we, we don't have, we don't issue a lot of violations. So we really, most of the time, it's not an issue, you know? People usually correct the fire, go violations pretty quick, we really don't have much of an issue.
Right, right. Yeah, that needs to be addressed, because again, you know, it seems like repetition, the same people all the time, I, I don't want to have, I don't want to waste our time. So if they're not met, I don't, we should not want to hear it.
Kevin, are you having a TRC with them before?
Yes.
Before that?
Additional plans for then, we will have another TRC. I sent out an email today. Well, anyway, just sent out an email today letting everybody know there'll be a memo sometime tomorrow. I've got to run a draft by Christian, and he'll be able to listen to, this is what's open from last time.
So, did I just hear that, and believe me, I'm not saying this in a derogatory manner, but you asked if we wanted to have a special on either the 7th or the 17th before for North 12th, but there's going to be a TRC prior to that again?
Correct. I was merely asking out of courtesy to counsel and anticipating that everything would be done in its timely fashion. But I thank the board for their comments.
Well, if you're having, I think, have the TRC and let's just keep it on the schedule. I, I can't, I can't control that engineer. We can't control that engineer, and I think we're going to just see more of the same, so let's see what happens.
We have Steve to take this team.
Yeah, and we could all be in dinner at 7:15. Okay.
I'm not sure if this is for the good of the board, but the, that meeting on the 27th is very close to Memorial Day. I happen to be going away, and so I just want to let you know, I will not be available, but, so I don't know, others may be in the same boat, because a lot of people take advantage of an extended weekend, and so you just want to make sure that you have a quorum.
Thank you for that, Mr. David, but I will tell you that we did take a poll on who was going to be here on that day, and we do have enough, and if, if, if something changes, we need to know ahead of time, because we don't want to prolong that. That's true. Mr. Grimaldi?
Quick facility housekeeping. So we could definitely throw away our old North Holden drawings, because.
Tabage.
The old dorm, bus, those are still in.
Unless you replace them with the new stuff recently from Wanda. Whatever Wanda's given you the most recently, that's it.
No, just from that, when they canceled the other meeting, I just put it back there so I can drop around with it, so.
Your car thins.
The only other thing I would ask, just because, these are gigantic. Kevin, we asked.
We did.
We did. We asked at the last ARSE meeting. He's not a tree hugger.
Well, that's the only thing that, that this room failed at, and that's okay.
We did. We tried.
I mean, you have to have it so you can see it, but, yeah, because looking on a computer, I came here to look at a few things over here. Being is good, but.
Anyone else for the good of the board?
I just think the board's doing a really good job over the last several years, bringing like big companies like Magni, you know, this technical place, and if more places come in here, it's just a great thing we're doing, of cleaning up properties, bringing in some world companies.
Right.
International companies, you know, this company's going to be the best in the northeast, and I think it's great for the town.
Couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Ledotti, I gotta say.
They don't have a truck.
We'll get a truck. But I agree with you. On a serious note, that, that is a feather in our cap, that, I mean, we're, we're doing great things in Catworth right now. We are really doing great things, and we're not just letting anybody come in and run over us either, no matter how big they are.
Right.
They, they're prepared, they're doing what they got to do, and they're, and they're making sense, and this board is fantastic, because we ask the right questions. Look at, look at the talent. It's unbelievable, you know? So my hat's off to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Ledotti.
They have a good mix of talent.
I'm sorry?
They have a good mix of talent.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to open a meeting to the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
I don't see.
Seeing none.
I make a motion to close the public.
Closed by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Fogliesi. I like that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Fogliesi again. All in favor?